I have six o'clock. We're gonna get started. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Ms. Como. Ms. Como, I see you nodding your head. So, Marcus present. Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Here.
Mr. Jimenez?
Excuse.
Ms. Leahy?
Here.
Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Meyer?
I don't think I've heard from Mr. Meyer.
Okay. Mr. Corburg?
Here.
Mr. Spivey? Mr. Spivey?
I have not heard that Mr. Spivey is not planning to attend.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Turner? Mr. Turner?
I have also not heard from Mr. Turner, but expect he will join us.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Beans?
Here.
And Mr. Baggett?
Here.
Thank you.
All right, so a quorum of the Board of Education is present. The regularly scheduled meeting of November 16th, 2020 is called to order. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
Tonight's agenda has previously been distributed to the Board with a motion from Mr. Corburg and second of a Ms. Como. We will approve the agenda as submitted unless there is a motion to amend. We will have a roll call vote for that.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
And Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Thank you. And Dr. Cooper Stoll, sorry.
That's okay. Aye. Okay, so we don't have any speakers registered for this evening. Are there any consent agenda announcements?
Yes, I would just have Ms. Spring make one announcement as it relates to an item in your packet.
Yeah, so especially for the new Board members, this is the first time you're going to see your monthly financial report and you will compare year to year at this time and then also year to budget expenses. You will get this every month and after each quarter on the second quarter and the third quarter, I'll go over that report with you. But for now, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. Give me a call.
I make a motion to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, the consent agenda is a mechanism used by the Board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. There has been a motion made by Ms. Como and second by Mr. Turner to adopt the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented unless there are any items that members want to remove from the consent agenda. If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Thank you. And Dr. Cooper Stoll, sorry.
That's okay. Aye. Okay, so we don't have any speakers registered for this evening. Are there any consent agenda announcements?
Yes, I would just have Ms. Spring make one announcement as it relates to an item in your packet.
Yeah, so especially for the new Board members, this is the first time you're going to see your monthly financial report and you will compare year to year at this time and then also year to budget expenses. You will get this every month and after each quarter on the second quarter and the third quarter, I'll go over that report with you. But for now, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. Give me a call.
I make a motion to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, the consent agenda is a mechanism used by the Board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. There has been a motion made by Ms. Como and second by Mr. Turner to adopt the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented unless there are any items that members want to remove from the consent agenda. If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
And Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Thank you. And Dr. Cooper Stoll, sorry.
That's okay. Aye. Okay, so we don't have any speakers registered for this evening. Are there any consent agenda announcements?
Yes, I would just have Ms. Spring make one announcement as it relates to an item in your packet.
Yeah, so especially for the new Board members, this is the first time you're going to see your monthly financial report and you will compare year to year at this time and then also year to budget expenses. You will get this every month and after each quarter on the second quarter and the third quarter, I'll go over that report with you. But for now, if you have any questions, don't hesitate to ask. Give me a call.
I make a motion to approve the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, the consent agenda is a mechanism used by the Board to deal with routine business that must come before the body. There has been a motion made by Ms. Como and second by Mr. Turner to adopt the items on the superintendent's consent agenda as presented unless there are any items that members want to remove from the consent agenda. If not, we'll have a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Aye.
So we'll now move to the Board consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on the Board consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, a motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and second by Ms. Como to approve the items on the Board's consent agenda unless there are any items that members want to have removed. If not, we will move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Sorry. Thank you. Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Aye. So we'll now move to the monitoring operational performance. O E five, financial planning.
I'd like to make a motion to the monitoring report for policy O E five, financial planning, and with respect to the provisions of policy B S R five, superintendent accountability. The Board of Education concludes that the superintendent and district are in compliance.
Second.
I think that was at the same time. So a motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and second by Mr. Turner that in regard to the monitoring report for policy O E five, financial planning, and with respect to the provisions of policy B S R five, superintendent accountability, the Board of Education concludes that the superintendent and district are in compliance. I'll now open that up for discussion if there are any questions or comments or anything that Dr. Engel or Ms. Spring might want to add.
I don't have anything additional. I know that there's a lot of information there and this was our first opportunity to monitor one of our operational expectations. This report is a little more black and white and compliance oriented in terms of we either have it or we don't. So I hope that the presence of all of these documents and links and statements satisfies the Board's expectations for this policy.
Are there any questions or comments from Board members? Then we'll move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Upstate.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Aye.
All right, next up, we have results R three involved citizenship.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the results R three involved citizenship monitoring report template as presented.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and second by Ms. Como to approve the results R three involved citizenship monitoring report template as presented. I'm gonna open that up for discussion. Dr. Engel or Dr. Lahackey, do you wanna speak to the revisions from the last time that came forward?
I will have Dr. Lahackey kinda discuss the changes that we made in light of our conversation at the last school board meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, we received some feedback both at the board meeting and also from the consultants from coherent governance about how we could improve R three. Some of what you see are more format structural and although we spent more time talking about R five and R six, let's just to give you an idea, if you look at R three point one, what we did is we clarified some of the interpretations a little bit more. We're more clear in our definition of terms according to the consultants and also below for the, I don't know if you remember, like if you look at R three point one, it says indicator one civics exam. The last time I presented, it was indicator slash measure. So we just clarified some of the vocabulary there. Those were the, just the kind of the cosmetic structural changes where we had more of a discussion, unless you would like to discuss some of the previous ones, was more down at R five, R six. And in that, the change there was for the indicators, what we would do is pending board approval, find curricular assessments to show that there was actual, a demonstration of learning related to social location over the previous year. So that was the same, same basic indicator. It's not specific at this point, but pending approval, we would find those curriculars assessments or create them accordingly.
Dr. Lahackey, are there, is there maybe an example or two you could share where we might look for those assessments?
Sure, you know, I've reached out to some of the content areas to find where we could find this. I'll give you an example. Where does Act thirty-one fall within our curriculum? How does it, how is it interpreted by our students? We do have, you know, with our revised social studies committee, we've worked with different stakeholder groups to identify certain lessons that we teach at certain times of the year for different reference groups that were part of that process. That is a good area that we could have exit tickets and outcomes where we can learn more about that. We do have already existing structures. For example, our elementary students are very involved with, let's say, the Mongue Cultural Center or Community Center. This year, that will be a virtual experience, but that might be another opportunity where we can pre-test, post-test students' thoughts before and after. Those are some of the initial ideas that we had, but really, we need to do a deeper dive, not just in social studies, but some of our other content areas as well.
Okay, so I have a question and, Dr. Engel, this might be directed more at you. I appreciate those revisions, Dr. Lahackey. I just wanna follow up on something that you said. You mentioned that with the Board, if the Board approves the template, then you would go and look for those assessments. From a procedural standpoint, this won't, we're approving this tonight, so this won't come forward again until it's a monitoring report. So is, do you wanna clarify that, Dr. Engel? I think that with the Board's vote, if the Board approves it, the Board is giving you some leeway, obviously, because it's the first time we're doing this monitoring report to find those assessments. I'm saying, I don't think that this will come back to the Board to approve those metrics unless you have thoughts on that, Dr. Engel.
No, that is correct. Generally speaking, the specific metrics aren't approved by the Board. It's more the overall indicator itself. And so we can certainly provide an update if the Board has a particular interest in metrics as we approach that. You know, we have been able to be a little more clear about what we're initially seeking in many of our other indicators. So this would be a little bit of a work in progress and we could certainly bring an update, but it would not be required under our governance structure as it stands.
Thank you. And thank you, Dr. Lahackey. Are there any questions or comments regarding the revisions to the template before we vote on it? Then Ms. Tigerwell, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Como? Ms. Como? Are you still there, Ms. Como? I'll come back to you. Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye. I'm not muted. I don't know what's going on. Yeah.
Nay.
Mr. Lee, your vote was nay? Thank you. Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Aye.
All right, next up, we have resolution authorizing issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed ten million general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty twenty.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for a sale of not to exceed ten million dollars general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty twenty. Okay, so this is the refinancing of a loan for the Northside construction. It's callable now.
We need a second first before we move forward.
I'm sorry.
Second.
I'm not sure who seconded that right there. Was that Mr. Turner? Okay, so a motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and second by Mr. Turner to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed ten million dollars general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty twenty.
Okay, so this is the refinancing of a loan for the Northside construction. It's callable now.
We need a second first before we move forward.
I'm sorry.
Second.
I'm not sure who seconded that right there. Was that Mr. Turner? Okay, so a motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and second by Mr. Turner to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance and establishing parameters for the sale of not to exceed ten million general obligation refunding bonds, series twenty twenty. Now I'll open it for discussion. Ms. Spring?
Okay, so this was the loan for the Northside School construction. They are now callable and the interest rates are very favorable. So over the life of the loan, we will save the district over six hundred thousand dollars with this refinancing. So that is what it is for.
Are there any questions or comments from Board members? Thank you for your work on this, Ms. Spring. Ms. Tigerwell, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Meyer?
Aye.
Mr. Corburg?
He mouthed aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Spivey.
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooper Stoll?
Aye.
So we're now gonna move to the information portion of the meeting and we have the School Resource Officer Program Review Report and I'm gonna turn that over to Dr. Engel.
Thank you, Dr. Cooper Stoll. So this has been a while coming and this process began in light of the M L U with the La Crosse Police Department ending on June thirtieth of next year. And so in the intervening time, the Board of Education charged the superintendent with completing a review of the S R O program and making a recommendation to the Board regarding its future. The Board called for an open, transparent, comprehensive, and timely review process that involve multiple types of evidence and ongoing opportunities for input from stakeholders. As a brief overview before I get into some of the findings and recommendations, disciplinary and arrest data for students in La Crosse is concerning. Our current practices and outcomes reflect the school-to-prison pipeline. To improve outcomes, we must engage in systematic change that addresses our beliefs and practices in the school district to meet our policy, mission, vision, values, and goals. These changes include moving away from punitive disciplinary practices, eliminating the criminalization of our students, and scaling back the S R O program. Ideally, we will improve our system of student support to the point where only a police liaison is needed and law enforcement is only called in extremely rare instances. Finally, this report is not about individuals, but about a system that is built up over time, leading to the outcomes that we see today. So hopefully, you had a chance to review the report and if nothing more, check out the conclusion and the executive summary. I know there was a lot there and we'll have time to dive into it all for sure. The first thing that I looked at in this review and examined was the school-to-prison pipeline in La Crosse. And a common refrain that I heard from some was that, you know, there's national data to support this occurrence, but what's happening at the local level? Is there data here to show the same thing? And the school-to-prison pipeline is characterized by punitive disciplinary practices that result in exclusion of students from school and increased rates of juvenile arrest. It also is characterized by disproportionate outcomes, particularly for students of color and students with disabilities. And so we would be able to look at our data to see if some of these things are present for our students in the school district. And some of the key findings in that area show that the school district of La Crosse relies on exclusionary discipline at higher rates than other school districts. We looked at, or I looked at, school districts that were similar in size as one benchmark to compare, looked at school districts that had similar demographics to the school district of La Crosse, and then also looked at local school districts in our area. Maybe things are a little different in western Wisconsin. But in each case, it showed that the school district relies on that exclusionary discipline, out-of-school suspensions higher than other school districts. In addition, that data showed that in the school district of La Crosse, there's disproportionate outcomes for students of color, students in poverty, male students, and students with disabilities. And that is not an outcome that we want to see and corresponds with that school-to-prison pipeline research. Looking at juvenile arrests, they also occur at higher rates in La Crosse than in comparable cities. So once again, looking at cities of similar size, looking at cities with similar demographics, and looking at local municipalities, it shows the same pattern that we saw with exclusionary discipline. And specifically, as it relates to disproportionality, it shows that black juveniles are arrested at higher rates in the city of La Crosse. Another marker of the school-to-prison pipeline is that there is a correlation with lower graduation rates. And we've seen that over the last few years, graduations for black students and students with disabilities have declined while the rates for reference groups have stayed the same or grown. So we have a widening gap there for our students in those categories. And then finally, I looked at comparisons to other S R O programs that are similar in demographics to the school district of La Crosse to see if they're staffed and funded at the same rates that La Crosse is. And it shows that our S R O program is staffed and funded at a higher rate than those other comparable school districts, both of similar demographics and locally. So in looking at the school-to-prison pipeline, you know, we've hit many of those markers that would indicate that that system is present here as well. And that's concerning. That's not an outcome that we want. The next thing that I looked at, or another set of findings related to our mission, vision, values, and goals in our school district. And one of our key statements that we have is about equitable outcomes for our students. We want students to belong. We want students to feel safe. We want our environment to be welcoming. And some key findings are that non-punitive and therapeutic approaches to student misbehavior were preferred by students, staff, parents, and were felt to be more effective than suspensions, tickets, and arrests. Additionally, as it relates to interactions with our S R O program, our black students and their parents and our students with disabilities and their parents report more negative interactions with our S R Os and frequently indicate that they make them feel unsafe at school. And that bore out in our survey data as we looked at that. And then looking at a couple of sources of data, including the Y R B S, we found that students of color feel as though they belong less and have fewer connections to teachers and adults in our school district. And each of those findings is contrary to what, you know, we want for our students. It's not the outcome that we desire and so we need to address that. One of the key requests of the school board was to seek stakeholder input so that folks had all the opportunity that they wanted to be able to communicate with the school district about this issue. We wanted to be as transparent as possible and give opportunity for that. Key findings from stakeholder input indicate that those who proactively communicated with the school district, who reached out to us, were more frequently supportive of removing S R Os from schools due to student fear of S R Os, the perpetuation of the school-to-prison pipeline, and they also cited the criminalization of students. Survey questions were given to our administrators as well to solicit their feedback, given their close relationship with S R Os and their understanding of how it works on a day-to-day basis in our school district. And they felt that S R O's presence in schools led to increased safety and positive relationships. And one of the things that really stood out to me was that they indicated that having a consistent officer with the right training responding to incidents led to more positive outcomes for students. And then lastly, another area of findings was the S R O program, comparing it to recommendations from the research and to other governmental agencies that have recommendations for S R O programs. And this finds that in a couple of areas, we don't meet those recommendations in terms of collecting and reporting data and having an established evaluation process. So those are areas where our program is lacking. Program meets many of the other characteristics, but these two are areas where we did not meet the mark. So any questions on those findings before I move on to recommendation? And we will have lots of time to digest this and plenty of time to have discussions, so there's no need to jump in right away if we wanna get through this first part. With that, I'll jump into the recommendation. So as I look through our policies, those key things that guide our school- With that, I'll jump into the recommendation. So as I look through our policies, those key things that guide our school district and charge me as the Superintendent and our administration, OE 10 of our learning environment policy, which, you know, we just passed recently, states that "The Superintendent shall establish and maintain a learning environment that is physically, socially, and emotionally safe, welcoming, inclusive, respectful, and conducive to effective learning." It also indicates that the Superintendent may not tolerate any behaviors, actions, discrimination, or attitudes by adults who have contact with students that hinders the academic performance or the well-being of students. And so this is really powerful statement. It asks us to really create a learning environment where every student can succeed and belong. And these findings show that the systems in the school district have produced outcomes that don't meet that goal, don't meet that expectation of our school district. Knowing that these outcomes exist, it compels us to make systematic reforms to serve our students as they deserve. There have been a number of previous efforts in our school district, in our city, in our county to address exclusionary discipline, juvenile arrest rates. And unfortunately, you know, those efforts have not led to significant change over time. A lot of improvements have happened. There's a lot of good intentions, but, you know, we still have these disproportionate outcomes for our students of color and for others. Our current system does not work for all of our students. It views students through a punitive and criminalized lens. And as our research shows, it's propelled by that exaggerated fear of school violence that our media and isolated events helps exaggerate. And it's also guided by a misguided belief that tough-on-crime approaches are effective. And yet the research shows that more therapeutic approaches and ensuring that we do not do harm is going to be a more effective approach for our students. And the research also shows that a better school system is possible, where all students and families are safe, welcome, and included, and where they're all able to reach their full potential. And we are compelled to make that change to get to that outcome. Addressing these systematic changes, though, also necessitates us to reexamine our current relationship with law enforcement. A reduction in punitive practices in the district will result in a lower need for SROs at all in our school district. And it shows in our research and the data here that time is of the essence in terms of making that change. Our families are clearly indicating that for some of our students, this does not work, and we are here to serve all of our students. Additionally, our program's funded at higher rates and has a larger presence than school districts that are similar to us. And that's incompatible with our mission here. Unfortunately, change does not happen overnight, and we need a little bit of time to put into place the therapeutic and restorative practices necessary to shift from these more punitive practices that we've developed over time to the ones that we know we need for our students. And our experience with our administrators and seeing some of the situations where law enforcement is called to engage with our students shows that consistency and an understanding of our students is also helpful in getting the best outcomes for our students when law enforcement does show up. So with that, there are six recommendations to the school board. The first is to develop and implement School District of La Crosse philosophies and disciplinary practices that reduce punitive approaches to student misbehavior and eliminate the criminalization of students. Two, develop and implement School District of La Crosse philosophies and practices that lead to proportionate disciplinary and arrest outcomes for historically marginalized students. Three, expand and shift to therapeutic and restorative practices for students who have challenges with behavior. Four, expand proactive social services or social service resources within the school district. Five, reduce the ongoing routine presence of SROs in school buildings while retaining consistency of responding officers. And six, establish an SRO oversight committee. The executive summary and the conclusions go on to state a number of action steps that we will take in order to reach these recommendations. The first is to create a school discipline committee, which will be made up of stakeholders within and outside the school district to take a number of actions. Two, this committee will be charged with providing an action plan to work on or to address the beliefs and practices within our school district so that we can make significant improvements in those areas. There's a number of specific things identified to investigate, but there will be even more that that group looks into. We've already done some work on root causes as it relates to disproportionate outcomes in our students with disabilities. And those recommendations will help this committee almost surely. Another action item is to collaborate with our current community partners to expand therapeutic and restorative practices. We have a number of things going on in our school district already. Our school district has recognized the need to shift some of these practices and has done a lot of good work, but it needs to continue and expand. These include restorative justice and conflict resolution, motivational interviewing, and PBIs practices that we already use but need to be considered further and expanded beyond their current scope. Another action item will be to collaborate with the La Crosse County Human Services and other local agencies to increase the proactive social services that we have in place. A lot of difficulties that students sometimes have when it comes to school is related to factors outside their control and to some of the things that they experience in our community, and they need additional supports and working through that and finding a way to be successful in all aspects of their life. And so other programs that we can consider are System of Care, Restorative Justice, our Community School Coordinators, and some of our other historically successful community service programs. One of the limitations that we face, as you probably read in the introduction, is that our current program, the SRO program, is funded through our Community Service Fund, Fund 80. And there isn't... To transition from a Fund 80 program into Fund 10 is difficult because our budgets are tight. However, there's opportunities to partner with other community agencies that are already doing this work, who we already fund through Fund 80, that we can transition the monies that went from one program to another. And so there's a really natural connection and shift there. So the recommendation for that action item is to increase proactive social services funding by $100,000 in '21-'22 and an additional $50,000 in '22-'23. Another action item is to collaborate with the La Crosse Police Department to reduce the number of SROs assigned to the school district from five to three by July 1 of next year and from three to two in the following year. A phased reduction is recommended to provide time to build up these other therapeutic supports, restorative practices, and social services as those SROs are scaled back. With that would come a shift in funds as well. We would reduce funding to the SRO program by $100,000 in the first year and by an additional $50,000 in the second year. This reduction of cost for officers will bring us in line with other comparable school districts and reduce the routine, ongoing presence of officers in our buildings. Their coverage will be in multiple buildings. They'll be able to develop an understanding of systems across our school district to provide that consistent response and understanding of how our schools work. But we'll be able to maintain the consistency of responding officers to limit the potential negative possibilities of those interactions. The school district will also collaborate with the police department to implement revisions to the SRO program, particularly as it relates to concerns about interactions with students from historically marginalized groups. And lastly, an SRO oversight committee will be put together with stakeholders from within and outside the school district to review data related to the SRO program, conduct an evaluation of the ongoing effectiveness on the SRO program, and to make recommendations for future improvements. That is the sum of the report at this time, and I look forward to questions, comments, and concerns.
Thank you, Dr. Engel. Before we open it up for questions, I just have a few comments. The first thing is I want to thank you for the work that you've done in putting together this proposal. As you mentioned, over the summer, the school board formed an ad hoc committee to come up with questions that school board members had about the SRO program. And we charged you with reaching out to a number of stakeholders. Certainly, you also were not limited to the list that we gave you. And as you mentioned, we asked that this be an open process, that it be transparent, and that there were multiple opportunities for people to contribute feedback. You have responded to the questions that we have. You have ensured that that process was carried out as we have asked. And you have actually gone beyond that in the research and the data that you have provided for us. And that, of course, is culminated in an over 100-page report. And that's going to take some time to digest, but I just want to take a moment, first of all, and thank you for the work that has gone into putting this together and for honoring the charge that the school board has given you. The second thing I'd like to do is take a moment and thank all of the folks who have reached out to the school board to express your thoughts about the program, to share your hopes, to share your concerns. People have written letters. They have attended open forums. They have contacted board members individually. And all of that correspondence has not only been shared with school board members, but we, as part of the charge, Dr. Engel, by the 1st of September, worked with the district to set up a site on our, that's linked to our school district site so that all of that correspondence and all of the work that has been done around this review are part of that as well. So thank you to the folks who have reached out to the school board. Finally, I just want to let the school board know as well where we go from here. Again, it is a lengthy and important report, and it's going to take time for everyone to read through it and to digest it. And it is publicly available, so that includes our families, our staff, and our community members as well. So this is coming forward as an information item tonight. This is the first time that we have a formal presentation on this. The next steps will be for the school board to vote on accepting the report that we charged the Superintendent with and the recommendations. But that will not come until our second meeting in December to provide, again, ample time for board members to read through the report and make any questions or comments that you might have and to receive any public input that may come. And with that, I'll open it up for any initial questions or comments from board members.
Thank you for doing this. I think that to be completely transparent and open is kind of disheartening and troubling for me to recognize that our own school district and community is contributing to the assassination of black bodies, right? And not black bodies by death, but black bodies by killing their dreams, right? Killing their moments of success by whatever's happening that's allowing, that's maintaining and perpetuating this systemic racism within education. And I think that's important to acknowledge. And it's troubling. And I think of just how far we have to go, right? And I hear you all when you say "time," but I have to say that time, for some people, was six months ago, right? Like, time for some people was 100 years ago. And so I hope that we do not take this lightly and tread our feet when coming up with the solutions needed to make this right and to address the success of our students of color holistically. There's just so much that I think about wanting to say. The other thing that I would mention as well, you know, I'll hold off on it, but I will hold on to what I'm saying in terms of our district is contributing to the assassination of black people, black youth, their dreams, their success, who they can become, right? And we have to really, truly think about addressing that. And I like the recommendations, but and I'll revisit them, and I have to say that I need something a little bit stronger that actually... Because it seems like the same, right? A lot of the same recommendations that I've seen from when I was a cultural liaison in a school district. When I look at institutions that have addressed issues of inequity, it's the same. And we always end up with the same results, which is the same numbers that we see in this report. And so I have to say, I'm hopeful, and at the same time, I'm just very... I'm heartbroken. And the reality of it too, and I won't take up too much time, is we thank everybody for their comments, but I will be honest and say the comments and the letters and the emails, while I'm glad you all did it, it also showed the good, the bad, and the ugly in this community. Some of the emails we received was very disgusting, especially geared towards our black youth. And so I don't think we can not acknowledge that, right? There were some supportive things that, you know, people brought to the table, but there also was some very misguided and misinformed individuals on this topic. And we want to constantly associate the SRO program to an individual and not to a job and how that job impacts our students and our families. And we need to really, truly think about that and be honest about it, because the data's not going to lie. And I have a lot more to say, but I'll be quiet now and let you all talk.
Mr. Spivey, you have the floor. If you'd like to say more, please do, or we can come back.
I'll let others talk, and then I'll probably chime back in.
Thank you, Mr. Spivey. Dr. Engel, would you like to respond to those comments, or would you like to wait until the end?
I've taken some notes, and I can wait for more comments to see if there's some common themes that arise.
So I want to speak to what you've gathered. First of all, I want to thank you for doing your due diligence. 111-page document is very lengthy, something I'm going to have to mull over, continue to read. I personally agree with like two of the recommendations, to be completely honest. I don't think the others are fitting. With the emails that we've received, as Mr. Spivey pointed out, as a black man living in western Wisconsin, a Cooley region, a predominantly white community, it was very, very disheartening, I'll tell you. There were specific emails sent to me, right, from white parents soliciting information from me, and a lot of them just did not get it. A lot of them do not have to live in the body of a black student, right? They do not have to walk through schools. They do not have to wear black skin. And a lot of them are misinformed, right? I will say that this is, it's an ongoing process, right? We have not made our decision. We are pointed in the right direction, I'm hoping. But I really hope that we really look in and hone in on a lot of those emails that were sent on why this is not working, right? If I could snap my fingers and make a decision, I would have made a decision, but I can't. This is a process of everybody having to do their deal and come together. But it's disheartening. It really is disheartening. I really feel like we need answers. And as Mr. Spivey pointed out, a lot of people needed answers a long time ago. And with school districts abroad, right, predominantly coming from many of the college students that serve in this community, coming from Milwaukee, many of those districts have made that decision. And it wasn't a drawn-out process, right? They know what they have to do, how they have to treat, you know, kids that are not from environments that they are from, right? How we can set them up for success, right? I live by a mantra. It's an African proverb. It takes a village to raise a child, right? If you live by that mantra, this is a very, very easy, this is a very easy decision to make, right? And what I really want, the community under- And what I really want the community to understand is that this is not a me situation. It is not a you situation, right? This is a, this is a kid's situation. These, this is about our kids. It's not about you. It's not political. It's about how we set all of our children up for success. And I do not believe, uh, we have been doing so with having this program, uh, in lieu of our school. So, um, a little disheartening. I will continue to read over, mull over. I agree personally with two recommendations. But yeah, so those are my feelings, not to take too much time away from everybody. Very, very disheartening. There are a lot of families in this community right now who are shaking their heads and saying, hey, a white establishment still doesn't understand it. A white administration still doesn't understand where we're coming from. And it's not to take away from any of the work you did, Dr. Engel, right? But it is, it is disheartening that we have to continue to, um, come back to this so many times where I feel that we we know where we have to go, right? The data shows that it's not working, and it hasn't been working. And that's in our district and districts abroad. So, uh, that's where I'll end it. Thank you.
Can I say something? So as I was perusing through it, because yes, it is a long document, I think it's supposed to be focusing on our SRO program. And in the end, that's kind of where it focuses. But to me, the thing that stood out more, which was, I'm going to borrow your guys' words, disheartening. And I would like to continue to get this data potentially is where it starts is our administrators are the ones that are suspending the kids. If you look at pages, um, twenty-nine, we're at twelve and a half percent of administrators having all those school suspensions. Twelve and a half percent of our kids are getting suspended. And when we look at pages fifty-seven and fifty-eight, when we listen to our kids, there are moments from blacks and Hispanics, depending on middle school or high school, they often feel that SRO is more responsive or more helpful than our administration. So I, as much as we are looking outside of our school district, the hardest thing we can do is look in the mirror and say, are we doing that justice? And so I think, and maybe your, um, recommendations of number one and number two, and of creating a school climate and educating our staff is to try to mitigate and help with that. So I'm not saying that you don't have a plan for it. But that was the thing that kind of struck me first is we don't, the SRO doesn't make that decision to suspend and start the process. It's, it's actually us, it's us. It's the schools that are starting that process, and then we call in that SRO. So, um, that's one kind of the thing that is shocking to me, because it is disproportionate to the districts of the same size and in our area. So maybe looking at that data is something that we have to look at as tough as it is, because like I said, looking in the mirror is harder than looking outside. So that's my comments.
Yeah, I just want to say, um, yeah, so with that comment too, you know, it's like, yes, it's administration too, but at the end of the day, a student being handcuffed to a chair, that wasn't the decision of the administrator. That's the decision of someone who perceives a student as a threat. And we have the data. The data was just presented to us, right? We have students that are failing and some even dying in our district, right? We have the data, and yet I feel like we're trying to mitigate, we're trying to like do it in a process, step by step, and trying to lower it. But we have the data that already says, what's wrong with our district? If we have the answers to it, if we have other places that are similar to this who have something that's worked, why, why aren't we adopting that, right? Literally, students' lives are on the line. Students, some students are even dead, right? And just really think about that. Yeah.
I just want to say, uh, before we move on, it seems like no one else is going to speak. We're running out of time. We're running out of time. This should not be a process where we fiddle around, right? We continue to say phase in twenty-twenty-one, phase in twenty-twenty-two. We're running out of time. A lot of our children are falling in between, uh, the cracks, right? They're going unnoticed. Um, the presence of police in their schools, right, have already set them, this prison, it's not just a cute word. It happens, right? Like, just because it's not happening to Billy, right, or your little cousin, doesn't mean it's not happening. So we, we're wasting time, and we're running out of time, rather. Because as, uh, Mr. Lee pointed out, um, there are multiple students from our district who are not in our district anymore, who should still be in high school, who are in prison. And I know their mothers and their fathers and their guardians. So we're running out of time. We don't have that much time to play around with this. This is something, systemically, it is a process that has been in place. It took a long time to get it this way. But we need to make the right decision to start the reversal of this process, for sure. Thank you.
And with that, I think the other thing to think about is that a lot of the stories is parents who had the similar situations as their children, right? Grandparents had similar situation as their grandchildren. And so when we talk time, we don't have time. But one of the things I also want to say is, as I look at these recommendations, I and when I say that the same stuff, like it's just this cycle, right? It's a cycle of, uh, let's just say systemic racism, right? Where we have this thing, you know, it's again, a lot of decisions are being made from the top. And we have the same folks making the same decisions, coming up with the same solutions. And we're not getting creative enough. We're not diving deep enough. And so, I mean, what would it look like? You know, just go there with me for a second. What would it look like to play, to pay black scholars to come into the La Crosse School District? And to sit down for a day and really talk through what needs to happen in this district and create a plan? What would it look like, you know, throw any race or, uh, underrepresented population? What would it look like to start calling in some of these community members to help with policy changes or, um, instruction or disciplinary actions and different things like that? I think we got to start moving into more of a creative and concrete way that really truly brings the people that we're impacting into the conversation. Yes. I'll leave it there. Um, I'm just hurt, y'all. Like, if you can read this and not cry and not have any type of emotion to it, I question why you're in the role that you're in. Because yes, I get it. It's about the SRO program. But this is more telling than just the SRO program, right? The SRO program, to me right now, when looking at this report, is small. I'm thinking about the pain that so many of these kids and their families are experiencing. I'm thinking about the continuous, uh, perpetuation of systemic racism that prevents our youth from being successful. I'm thinking about, like Kianta, those young kids that end up in jail or that don't graduate high school and end up on the street. I worked with some of those kids. And, you know, it's hard. This is a hard one to deal with. And I, I know great people that's going to deal with it the right way. And at the same time, I also, while I am very hopeful, I still recognize repeats itself often. And so I'm just hoping that we stop it, that we dis-
Mr. Spivey, you're going in and out.
It used to happen within education.
Dr. Engel, thank you for your work and your due diligence and getting this thing figured out. It is still a very, very long road. We still have got decisions to make, for sure. But yeah, very, very, and this is not just for you. There are districts abroad who have not made this decision. It's disheartening for them too, in their community, in the parents, you know, of marginalized students and black students. This is, we're just filling it tonight in La Crosse. But they feel it all, they feel it in an all over place. So, uh, thank you for your work. Um, and we will readily still get to it and make our decision, uh, second meeting in December.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. I fully recognize that there's a lot to digest here, and it clearly shows that there is an incredible imperative, and our change needs to happen immediately. It should have happened decades ago, and any extra day that I recommend is not good enough, right? And I fully recognize that. At the same time, I want to make sure that our students are fully supported, and that does take time. And we can't build something from nothing overnight, and changing beliefs and changing practices, unfortunately, does take a process, and I want to make sure that we do that with the right voices, with the right people, and make sure that it meets the needs of our students of color, of our students with disabilities, and other historically marginalized groups. But yes, thank you.
Dr. Engel, can you speak to, you just said that changing people's beliefs doesn't happen overnight. What do you mean, whose beliefs, if you will?
I focus primarily on our school district, our staff beliefs. That's who I have control over. I also believe in accountability, um, you know? If we hold each other accountable to do the right thing, then our beliefs become a little less important. But if you have the right beliefs, then you are propelled on your own to do the right thing every day without supervision. But accountability and beliefs.
Thank you.
I apologize. My internet went out, so I don't know what you all heard and what you didn't hear, but, um, yeah.
I think we got most of it, Mr. Spivey. It seemed to be just at the end where it was waffling just a little bit. Dr. Engel, I have a couple of questions, unless there are other comments or questions beforehand.
If I may. I was just going to say, Mr. Spivey, I really liked your idea of bringing in scholars and local families affected and voices. I think that individual stories are very powerful. And I really like the idea of hearing straight from the source, hearing straight from individuals, and it really helps me personally to relate, because I've never encountered many things similar to this. So it's hard to, I certainly understand the need for a change and wholeheartedly agree, but I also just can't relate. So I think that those stories, those people would really help.
Thank you, Mr. Baggett. So the first question that I have for you, Dr. Engel, is as the superintendent, you obviously have, you're the direct connection to staff. And I noticed that one of the first action steps that you listed, let me take a quick step back. I appreciate that you approached this as a systemic problem and indicate, because it is systemic, that there are multiple ways that it has to be addressed. So your first couple of recommendations have to do with changes to school district policies and school district philosophies. And since, as again, the superintendent, that you, that's where you have perhaps the most direct impact. I noticed that you were going to appoint this committee January, by January first, that you were going to have stakeholders in the district, but also outside the district, and that the recommendations would be made by the end, before even the end of the school board, to, uh, excuse me, the end of the school year, to the school board and to you for how we start changing those policies and philosophies. I'm assuming that is because this is before the next school year. Can you take just a moment and maybe speak to how you selected those dates? What your thinking is about that work? And then I'll turn to questions I have about the SRO program.
So the first date is to select a committee, and I've been in the process of developing a strategic plan for Equity and have been engaging with community members across the school district and staff within the school district. So I think there is a strong pool of individuals to choose from that we're already familiar with that have the right understanding and perspective, that can be a diverse group. And so I think there's no reason we can't do that now. That can happen relatively quickly between now and January. The second item is to bring back a recommendation by May first. There's an imperative to do it now. We don't have time to wait, and it needs to be in place as soon as possible. But we also need to take, do due diligence to do it right and to examine the best practices from evidence and from the lived experiences of the folks that will be affected. And so, um, there are many things that are already going on in our school district that we can expand and emphasize, but there are also some new things that we'll have to investigate and determine if they're the best practices for the school district of La Crosse. But that work needs to be a balance of quick and thorough. By September first, um, it indicates, um, expanding therapeutic and restorative practices. That's by the start of the next school year. So that gives us some time over the summer to develop partnerships with others or to engage in training to be able to do those things well. Partnering with, uh, La Crosse County Human Services by July one, that's kind of our fiscal year. So that's a timely, uh, deadline, uh, in order to develop those relationships, gives us six months, and we should be able to easily work out something in that timeframe. And then the dates for the SRO program line up with our fiscal years as well, reducing, uh, the scope of that program by forty percent, and then an additional twenty percent over the next two years. And then the other programs also align with this summer, um, being, uh, putting into place, uh, an oversight committee that will oversee and provide feedback on the program as it moves forward. And like I said, you know, at the outset, um, my, my goal would be that we have developed such good systems of support for our students that even that program can be scaled back to a liaison that we have communication with who understands schools to a certain extent, but so rarely needs to be called, because we have provided such great support for our students in the first place.
So, Dr. Engel, the Equity Strategic Plan that you have been working on, I know you've already collected, uh, no, you've already, um, talked with some students and staff and community members as you're working to put this together. Do you see this dovetailing with the recommendations that you're making in this, in this report?
Absolutely. Um, this would be an element of a broader strategic plan. So, uh, addressing punitive disciplinary practices, addressing the criminalization of students, addressing law enforcement in schools. Those would be elements of an equity plan. You know, this is, you know, coming before that report, that plan has been developed, but it would be a natural element of it in the first place, and will certainly be an element of it as we move forward. A strategic plan for Equity will encompass all of our operations at the school district, from facilities to professional development, to hiring, to recruiting and retention. The strategic plan for Equity is the only strategic plan that we'll have. That is the goal. That is the intended outcome, is social justice for all of our students.
All right. The final question that I have for you is just a point of clarity. So I had a chance to read the entire report, and, um, I just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly. So from what I read from the report, the reason that you're providing for why it's important to maintain a connection with the police department is because there are going to be times that law enforcement have to be called for emergencies. In the case, uh, there'll be certain circumstances. And it seems like from some of the, the, the data that you collected as part of the review, that it was identified that when that happens and, and the rare cases that that may happen, that students benefit if, if the officer that responds has had specialized training um, to work in schools. Because it seems to me that what you're advocating is not, is not business as usual here. It's, um, the SRO program, even though you're advocating that we make that, keep that connection, it's not because it's going to be the same program it is now. Um, where individual officers are assigned to individual schools and that's where they work throughout the day. This is more of a liaison type of relationship where we've got people whom we know that we can call when we have to call them, um, and that we can work to establish those connections. So can, am I reading that wrong? Am I, you know, do you want to speak to that? Because I just want to make sure there's no confusion about what you're recommending.
Yes. So it's clear that for, um, some of our students and particularly those from historically marginalized groups, that the ongoing presence of a law enforcement officer in our schools is damaging. And so we can change that practice. We can remove, you know, SRAs from being in our schools every day. At the same time, reports or data that I got from administrators, from principals, from directors, um, uh, indicate that if, if a law enforcement officer shows up who doesn't understand kids, who doesn't understand the situation, it, it can have negative effects that are worse than if it was, uh, an SRO who, who showed up. And a number of specific incidents were related to me anecdotally that demonstrated that when a, a police officer who has no training shows up, the, the circumstances can get much worse for a student. There's a greater likelihood of, of physical contact, um, situations escalate in ways that are unproductive and may lead to arrest as opposed to deescalating the situation. And so there is an incentive for when an officer is called, and hopefully it's very rare, that they have specialized training for dealing with juveniles and to understand schools, um, so that they're able to do the right thing in the right ways. And that is borne out in the literature review as well as governmental recommendations that law enforcement officers that do show up to schools have specialized training. Uh, and so that is why that recommendation is there. And ideally it is infrequent. It is, um, you know, not a regular occurrence, but when they do show up, until we have these other supports in place, um, I want to limit the negative interactions with students as much as possible. And having a specially trained officer who understands schools and juveniles is, um, a better intermediate outcome.
I can second that. Talking to officers that are within our community, um, when they sometimes have issues with youth after hours, instead of going forward with tickets, they have reserved that, um, incident and talked to the SRO at the school so that the SRO can talk to the kid and potentially not have to go that next step and deescalate it, knowing that that SRO knows what's happening more with the kid's life and what's happening at school or what's happening at home. So I know that there are officers that really do rely on the SRAs as that intermediary to be able to say, you know what, that kid's having an issue and, and we're going to work through it this way or, um, deal with it in a different way without ticketing and without going down that route. So I, I do, um, I have heard that from, directly from police officers' mouths.
That's true. And arguably the NROs do the same thing. Which is the neighborhood resource officers and they build that same connection with those families and those officers refer to those families as well. Um, Dr. Engel, I'm not sure if you would be able to answer this question. So if it's okay, I think I want to throw this at, uh, someone else in your cabinet that's been here. Um, I'm curious to know with recommendation one and two. So this is now my emotions aside, let's get to the work. Uh, how does this differ from the, um, PBIS committee that was created about five or six years ago? Where we put a bunch of diverse folks to the table and, and address discipline at one point in time to learn different cultural, uh, understandings of behavior and interactions and all that. So I'm curious to know how this is going to look different from that. Um, and if you can answer, Dr. Engel, feel free. Um, I just wanted to throw it to somebody that was a part of the original. Cause I think that committee also happened before that committee. So I just want to know what will make this one different.
Um, I, I can't speak exactly to what went before or the scope. Potentially, uh, Mr. Teff could weigh in on his thoughts on how this might differ or Mr. Harcy. Um, I would imagine that this would be more comprehensive in nature. PBIS is a little more elementary and middle focused and a lot of this data is from our high schools, you know, so that's, it would be a, a difference. Um, for me, there would be a level of accountability to the data as we move forward. But I can let Mr. Teff add, um, maybe how he envisions this would look a little different in the future.
Yeah. So, uh, good, good question, um, Mr. Spivey. Think though, the work is really, um, obviously includes PBIS, but, but is beyond that at, at this time. Um, I think a lot of the, the work, um, moving forward will involve efforts around social emotional learning, um, which is a big component above and beyond, um, PBIS, like, like Dr. Engel talked about. I think a, a big component is really to make sure that these systems get implemented with fidelity. Um, I think that's been, you know, one area where when we, when we really look at, you know, the, the systems that we've worked on for, you know, like you've mentioned, for years trying to implement, um, they're still not implemented all the way that we, we would like. And so I think a, a big component is really to, uh, identify those, um, systems that provide, uh, the right support, the right structure within schools, but really to make sure that they're implemented the way that they're designed. It's like this difference between how we say things are and how they actually are. We want those two things to, those two things to match. So when you look at the research, you know, PBIS continues to show up on it. Um, when you, when you look at what school districts who've struggled with some of the other challenges, um, PBIS and social emotional learning and mental health supports and, uh, those, those sorts of components continue to be identified as those high leverage systems. Uh, what's different is I, I personally, I think is fidelity to implementation. To what degree is it actually being carried out, uh, the way that, the way that it should be? So like Dr. Engel was talking about with accountability, making sure that we're clear on the systems, we're clear on the expectations. And most of, most of all, we're, we're accountable to making sure they get installed and implemented the, the right way.
I would also add that I, like, as I look around the district, there has been some incredible work and there are incredibly, you know, good people doing really hard work to do the right thing. But I don't know that it's all, all, everything's not pointed in the same direction. I, I think there's a lot of scattered random acts of equity that are, are doing good things. But we need a unified focus and a direction and a commitment to seeing that work through. And, and folks need support who are doing that work, you know, and, and not that there hasn't been support, but they need, you know, a unified effort. And if we take all these pieces and point them in the same direction, it will have a, a much greater effect. It will magnify. So we've done trauma informed work. We've done PBIS, but it has been in isolation or not in conjunction with each other and not for a specific purpose. And this report, I think, gives purpose. It highlights, it's, it's tough to look at, in the mirror sometimes and see what, what has happened, but it also gives a clear imperative for change right now. And I, I think aligning all those efforts, holding ourselves accountable, reporting out in a frank and clear way to others and, uh, and making a difference is what is needed next. Thank you, Mr. Teff.
Thank you. Last thing I'll mention is as we look at the accounts of these families, I'm wondering if anybody has reached out. And while it might not be, you know, the same employees that exist in the district, and in some cases there are, but have we offered any type of reconciliation and apology, uh, anything to, to these families that have had to experience some of these? I don't even know what you want to call them. Uh, hardships though, not really, uh, blatant disrespect or disregard to their success.
Systemic racism.
Yes. Thank you, Kianse.
Um, I have apologized personally when I have encountered the difficult stories from, uh, students and families. You know, we owe it to them to do better and, um, we have to continue to do that, but I think that would be a, a good step is to, to reach out and ensure that, um, folks know that. You know, the things that have happened in the past are unacceptable and we, we need to move forward with change. I know that, uh, for a lot of folks, they're tired of apologies too. They just want to see a difference and they want to see a difference now and they want to see it borne out by action. And, um, that is really how, uh, I know that our school district will be held accountable. This things change. Like we can offer apologies and I, and I do every time I encounter one of those stories and, and a family that has had, you know, that difficulty. However, what they want to see is a difference and they want to see a different outcome for their child, for their family, for their community. And so that is really to me, the, the most important thing is following through on what we say we're going to do and making actual systemic change. It leads to actual differences in our outcomes for our students.
And thank you. Just to clarify too, like, I'm saying an apology, but reconciliation can look like many things, right? So I appreciate that. And I like the fact that you're saying addressing the system and making the system changes is how we show our accountability and, uh, hope to reconcile with those families.
Dr. Engel, I have a question about, um, you said, um, the officers that will be responding to situations. Uh, you talked about them, um, being highly specialized and trained to understand schools and juveniles. And I'm just wondering how this is distinct from the training that SRAs are currently given? Because they should be highly trained and specialized to deal with students and schools, but we still end up with situations and acts of violence. Um, so I'm wondering how this new specialized training will be distinct from the old training or if it will change at all?
So there are a number of trainings that are, uh, SRAs already received that we want to make sure that we continue. There's some broad based SRO training and, um, Chief Kudron, uh, in a letter to the school board has indicated a number of um, other trainings that are directly related to juveniles and some that are more related to, um, fairness and policing, understanding systemic racism as it relates to policing and those sorts of things. So those trainings, um, have not been systemically implemented yet. And so those would be additional trainings. And then a, another element of that is that understanding of like school law, um, understanding our school systems, understanding the, the limitations and the, um, extra privileges that students have in our society. And so if it was, you know, a new officer who had not, uh, been involved in schools before, that, that takes some time to learn and, and that's a bit of on the job training as well. And so we need to make sure that they have, uh, an opportunity to work with an administrator to understand the differences between an adult on the, in the community and a, and a child in our schools. Um, the rules and the laws, uh, pertain differently as it relates to a whole host of constitutional issues and, um, uh, best practices. So, uh, it's a both, some of the training that they already receive, new training that has been proposed by law enforcement and, um, they have always, um, our, our SRAs have always taken on any training that we have provided as well or encourage them to go to. So as we identify specific things, um, whether it's trauma informed care or PBIS training, um, involving them in those things so that they understand our preferred response and how we deal with students in our schools. So it does not lead to criminalization and arrest. And then also, um, just that on the job training to understand how schools operate. So that when they walk in the building, they know the correct procedures like a, a teacher or a TA or an AA or our principals would, would understand. Does that help, Mr. Baines?
Yes, thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments at this time? Again, we will have additional opportunity to just, to discuss. But I certainly want to attend to any questions or comments just initially. If not, we're going to conclude this portion of the discussion until the next meeting. All right. So we're going to move to the announcement portion of the meeting, hearing no objections. And we will begin with communications from our, um, student representatives to the board. It does not matter who wants to go first. I can call on someone or you may jump in.
All right. I guess I'll go first. Um, I don't really have much to report. I will report on the student senate. Uh, student senate has been, uh, continuing to look at, um, issues in our school. Um, we formed two committees to try to address either the concerns of students or concerns, um, from the senate ourselves. And we will be continuing to work on that. Um, other than that, I don't have any announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Baines. Mr. Baggett.
Um, great news. Got the survey out to, um, all Logan students and Logan parents got about 150 responses each. And so results are in on hybrid school and, um, what people from Logan are thinking. So Logan students, um, I was a little surprised, but actually about when asked if they think Logan High School should offer a hybrid education option to a student second semester, about 75% said that they think Logan should. And about 70% said that they would attend, um, at least two days a week under the current proposed hybrid model. Several, um, the rest mentioned that they wanted to stay online. Um, a lot of people also mentioned that they'd like to get back to sports. And one comment made was that people like students might be interested in splitting by grade level and set up alphabetized because it's good health improved socialization. Um, personally, I can vouch. I know a lot more people in my grade than just in the first half of the alphabet. And then parents, um, a lot of parents are highly, as you all know, highly opinionated about hybrid school. And in the effort of transparency, many are frankly angry and disappointed. Many parents are pushing for outdoor sports, um, about 75, 80% for hybrid school. And let's see, um, about 75% of parents said that if the hybrid option was available, they would send their student to school. And I had, so it was an anonymous survey and I had strongly agree, agree, disagree, strongly disagree. About 50% strongly agreed that they would send their student to school. Many parents expressed concerns over their students' socialized isolation and would be interested in structured virtual opportunities as well as like the return of outdoor sports. in structured virtual opportunities, as well as like the return of outdoor sports. Someone, I often open-ended question, and I think someone put something well. My son's last year was just, my son's last year just wanted as much normalcy as possible, while being as safe as we can. Many echoed things like this. And many parents liked the idea of a hybrid model, but don't feel that it's viable until things improve around here. And then, just general things that I got from the survey from the open-ended question were that many students and parents on behalf of their students said that they would be happy and willing to wear a mask to school, socially distanced. And many said that they would also like greater communication from the school board and superintendent, specifically mentioning direct emails about decisions for hybrid school and greater explanations.
That it?
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Mr. Baggett, for sharing the information. I'm curious, did you work with anyone on that survey? Or did you just write it and send it out?
Yeah, yeah, I talked to them with Mrs. Genivico and Ms. Fords at our Logan administration, and with my mom, who's an English professor at EWL, like phrasing, and just got it, like, because it's, it's very hard to not have leading questions and to try to make fair surveys. And I also definitely got some feedback that I'll change for the next time. And then, I got that sent out to everybody.
Thank you for sharing that, Mr. Baggett. All right, next up, Ms. Como, do you have announcements for us this evening?
Yep, um, I was at CISA four last Wednesday, and they actually presented on something that's very, kind of a hot topic right now, is trying to get people certified to be able to become teachers. So, if you have a degree in something, biology or whatever, to work with the CISA and with the school district, if the school district has an opening, they would partner with the school district, and CISA would basically train them to get their certificate in teaching. So, it's kind of the above and beyond, instead of having to go to a four-year college, they would be working with them to kind of do it as a partnering to get their certificate to be a teacher in that area. So, considering we don't have a lot of substitutes right now, and there's a shortage, and could potentially be even more of a shortage if, if people get sick, it's kind of nice that they're looking forward and thinking ahead and trying to come up with a larger base of educators that we might be able to work with. So, that's very nice. Otherwise, it's the normal finances and, you know, the boring stuff. So, that's, that was the fun stuff.
Thank you, Ms. Como. Mr. Corburg, do you have announcements for us?
Yeah, yes, a couple of things from the Public Education Foundation. We had our grants committee meeting last week. While the numbers were a little bit down, as far as proposals that were given, there were still very good efforts, and a lot of them were staff and, and teachers working to adjust to virtual learning. So, we are, Grants Committee is recommending about $21,000 in grants, and then it will be, hopefully those will be approved by the executive committee, and then the, the full committee, I think we meet next week. So, that will be shortly. So, that would bring a total for a year to right around $47,000 that the foundation has given out in grants, including the Equity and Diversity Inclusion Grants awarded in October, many of them that we saw earlier on our, our grants and contracts, contact, contract sheets, that were in our earlier budget item that we had on our board tonight. But anyway, that'll leave about $40,000 for grants coming up in the second semester. And then, there will be some pretty good favorable news coming out about the random acts of kindness that is going on, the, the fundraising that's going on for that. There's a special committee that's, that's working on, on putting, get, pulling that together to, to reach a certain level amount, and we, we hope to have an announcement on that in the next month or so. That's what I have.
Thank you, Mr. Corburg. I have no announcements for this evening. Dr. Engel, do you have any announcements?
I have no announcements for this evening.
Are there any other announcements before we move to the next agenda item?
Yes, I do just have a brief announcement. It's Laura. I will be updating all of everyone's board docs passwords, as board docs has required a more robust password recommendation. So, just get prepared that that'll be coming end of December, so I'll do it between our last board meeting in December and before the first one in January. So, just be prepared for that and watch your email.
Thank you, Ms. Diggerwell. All right, so, agenda planning?
I'd like to make a motion to, to approve the December 7, 2020 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections.
Second.
A motion has been made by Mr. Corburg and second by Ms. Como to approve the December 7, 2020 Board of Education Agenda with any additions or corrections. We will have a roll call vote.
Ms. Como?
Aye.
Ms. Leahy?
Aye.
Mr. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Ma, oh, excuse me, Mr. Ma is gone. Mr. Corburg?
Aye.
Mr. Spivey?
Aye.
Mr. Turner?
Aye.
Dr. Cooperstol?
Aye.
All right, we'll now turn it over for board debriefing, and I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Turner.
Okay, hey, so, very, very fast and quick and sweet debriefing. I think we did very, very well with our time. I have a question, actually, that I will pose every time I'm the guy to do this, and this question is, did the conversation move us toward our goals? I do believe the conversations that we had today move us toward our goals. A lot of us a little bit more daunted than others today. There is a lot of optimism. I'm, I'm very optimistic in moving forward with everything that we discussed today. I will say for sure, I am very, very taken aback, actually, by the, the, the participation and cooperation with the school reps. Thank you for that data, Mr. Baggett. Beautiful, I love that. And so, otherwise, I think we, we used our time very wisely. We are in it, hour 34. And so, thank you. I think that one of the most important things I want to leave you with is our logo is a hand reaching for the stars. Our students are reaching for the stars. We are their soil, they are our flowers. Do good for them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, so, with that, if there's nothing else, then I am going to adjourn our, our meeting. Thank you, everyone, and see you in, virtually in a couple of weeks.